If I ever consider running for council or mayor or any type of public governmental position, just slap me across the face, okay? I, uh, now the people that are doing it are absolutely amazing. Fortunate to have met many of them and have had great conversations on our podcast and other platforms with these individuals. But man, it's gotta be really tough when people are, you know, kind of looking at you and during public comments or upset or frustrated and then kind of not lashing out per se, but somewhat attacking you verbally that you then kind of smile and say, you know, thanks for your opinion, uh, next. But anyways, we'll, we'll jump to that kind of, um, uh, when we get down to our city council section. But this is live in Fort Collins. We come to you live every Monday, 12:00 PM noon. Uh, gonna run for about thirty to sixty minutes depending on how much engagement there happens to be. So if you're watching this live, feel free to ask questions, comments or anything like that. And I'll try to answer them as I'm going. Otherwise, um, you know, if you guys are watching this and have any questions that are watching this on rerun, comment below and I'll get back to you. You know, we've got a lot of activity going on with the Fort Collins, uh, mission. Going to be built over there on College Avenue and Hickory. It seems like it's a pretty much like a done deal. It's going to be happening, um, you know, between Bohemian Foundation, uh, City of Fort Collins, among other groups, the mission. This is going to be built two hundred to three hundred beds. But, uh, in the meantime, between now and when it is operational, we definitely have a shortage of beds. And last year turned away one thousand individuals, one thousand men, uh, from our mission. Now we have an overnight bed that holds eighty-nine beds year round. Uh, we do have some overflow shelters, uh, but for one reason or another, you know, whether it be there's dogs or, um, you know, partner or whatever, they, they're not able to stay. So about a thousand people went, um, got turned away last year. Apparently we're entering in our ozone time period, which is between June until August. And last year, fifty percent of our summer days, um, our ozone was high. Now, we do have a new monitoring station in Loveland. So they kind of are gonna monitor data between Fort Collins and Longmont. And hopefully between this, you know, there's a lot of different things that City of Fort Collins is trying to kind of combat. Northern Colorado, Loveland, Laramie County, um, you know, the, in regards to oil and gas, uh, traffic, active modes. I mean, it's, it's definitely at the forefront of our conversations and how can we combat this? And I will say, you know, I am a, you know, big time driver. I, I drive all over the place, real estate agents generally, you know, they drive a bunch. Um, and it's hard to, you know, take your bike on a day-to-day basis. But like, maybe it's days like this where I'm relatively at my desk, heavy admin day. We do our YouTube lives that I can, you know, more focus on, uh, shifting those modes. But it's gonna take a collaborative effort. And it's interesting because one of the consent calendar items was, which was the pedestrian crossing, uh, pedestrian and bike crossing at Vine and Jerome, that's gonna be about, I think it's like six hundred thousand dollars, uh, which is wild because it's not that much of a change to that crossing. But, uh, is to try to connect paths and make it more user-friendly, biker-friendly to offset some of these climate issues. And, you know, they actually pulled some money from our climate action plan. And Kelly Olson pulled the item and then was kind of informed like, hey, actually, this is probably one of our bigger impact items. If we can try to get people off the roads and on their bikes, you know, gas, uh, emissions could, could reduce. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see what that data pulls and what type of information where we can, you know, um, use to offset some of our activities, behaviors or businesses, buildings, all that good stuff. Uh, Prospect Road is gonna be closed starting tonight at about eight PM. West of College Avenue, there's gonna be some, uh, the BNSF Railroad is gonna have some kind of work done at its crossing. Max line is not gonna be impacted, but there's gonna be some pretty decent detours. And I will say fortunately, all, most of the CSU students have gone home for the summer. But that's not to say that it's not a major artery. Um, technically our midsection of Fort Collins, so technically the middle of Fort Collins is Prospect and College. So pretty significant. So if you're driving in and around that area, find alternative routes, plan ahead of time. Because the last thing you want to do is kind of get stuck and then all of a sudden there's a few cars behind you. And you're just like, well, I'm here. So, uh, plan ahead, but it's, it is supposed to take a few days. Um, I believe it's, uh, let's see, you're delayed June tenth to twelfth. I'm not sure how many days it's supposed to be closed, but it's starting tonight and it looks like maybe two days, June tenth through the twelfth. Um, let's see here, a couple of things that are happening is, uh, there is a food store, Gordon Food Services has, I don't, I'm curious. Have any of you guys ever shopped at or ate at Shamrock Foods, which used to be, gosh, what was that? Steels maybe? I don't know, over, um, off of, uh, College and Foothills Parkway. Back behind there, it used to be a grocery store, now it's, uh, Shamrock Foods. It's, it's for restaurants and grocery stores, but also open to the public to go shop and possibly eat there. Um, a buddy of mine works for Shamrock Foods. Um, I've never been there since it's changed, um, from the grocery store to what it is now. I've never been there. And, uh, there's a new one opening up, Gordon Food Services. Now, it's also interesting because again, that Shamrock is kind of tucked away behind there, right, right off of Mason Street. Um, you know, the only time I see it ever is when I'm going to get my car washed, I breeze through car wash. And, you know, I see the parking lot, there's people there, there's, it's activity. Um, but maybe Gordon Food Services is a similar operation as Shamrock Food, but taking the building of the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. So fortunate now, like that was kind of a, a little bit of a scary commercial zone because we had, you know, uh, big lots that went vacant. And then there was like, you know, Spirit Halloween for a while. And now it is, uh, Planet Fitness, I think, um, I'm pretty sure it's Planet Fitness, uh, that's there. Seems to be doing well. And then Bed Bath &amp; Beyond shut down and was vacant for a while. And then we got Gordon Food. So that's, that, um, development is actually to my, I believe, fully, uh, fully occupied, which is great. You know, last thing you want to see, um, ever really in any place in town or city or, uh, business district is vacancy. So, uh, glad to see those, those businesses taking, uh, root here in Fort Collins. So what we can do is, is go there and support them. Speaking of which, Natural Grocers is going to be taking, um, uh, or has purchased the building where Joanne's fabric used to be. And on a show here not too long ago, there was speculation that Aldi's was going to take this place. But it seems like that is not gonna happen and Natural Grocers, um, which my wife just got some candy from Natural Grocers and she, I, I kind of got a slap on the wrist because she came into the laundry room and I was just like sitting there eating it. And she's like, oh, caught red handed. I was like, well, I don't care if you catch me, I just don't want the kids to catch me because then they're gonna ask for candy. Uh, but it was some solid candy. So anyways, Natural Grocers, looks like it's gonna take over, possibly demolish that building and, uh, rebuild from there. Probably not too, in a not-too-distant future, that Fort Collins Kia building is gonna be vacant because Fort Collins Kia is being, is, is building a world-class facility up by the Nissan facility that Fort Collins Nissan and Fort Collins Kia just built. So, um, some decent turnover in that area, but hopefully that building specifically what Joanne's, you know, it's got the wood shake siding, kind of a blight, not a blight, that's not fair because I will talk to you about blights here shortly. But kind of a, just a rundown building that, that is in a great location, needs something to happen there. And it looks like Natural Grocers is gonna kind of take the reins and move forward with that. Alrighty, jumping into city council. So, um, you know, there's public comment every, every week. And this, this week, there was forty-five people signed up to, to talk. If you're going to talk at public comment, they get, they allow for ninety minutes of public comment and will reduce, uh, minute allocation per person to try to accommodate that. But if they can't get to everybody, they will finish with public comment at the end. And it was kind of another, uh, you know, rowdy section. There was some, there's some major decisions taking place and going on with the Hughes Stadium right now. And the indigenous people want to make sure that they have a seat at the table and voices are heard. And they were there in numbers and there were some, uh, religious symbols, uh, cultural symbols that, you know, whether they were misconstrued of what they were or not allowed in the chambers. It was, it was pretty, uh, it was pretty intense and people were getting emotional and kind of coming at city council very upset about it. You know, the, the whole lawsuits, uh, conversation was thrown around. But, you know, this kind of also goes back to where it was, I think it was March fifth, where there was three people who actually super glued their hands, um, in protest to, I think, the Free Palestine protests and ended up getting misdemeanors from the City of Fort Collins. But, you know, that's kind of the stuff that they, they just, they take in strides, city council, city, um, mayor, take in stride, kind of stay calm. They stick to the, uh, rules and regs for how the, um, chambers operate. So if you're going there and, um, you know, there are, there's definitely rules that you, that you have to maintain and follow. And I would say, um, you know, understanding those beforehand so that you don't get upset if you were, or if you're trying to, you know, make a statement and then get kicked out. I mean, I guess, you know, do you, but, um, regardless, uh, it sounds like there was some pretty decent excitement there. So, um, but I, I really appreciate our, our mayor, um, uh, Mayor Jenny Arnn. I think she does a great job. I think she has just an amazing, um, you know, bedside manner, uh, is not the right name for it, but just great personality, even head, uh, level-headed, um, smart, intelligent woman. And I think we're very lucky to have her as our mayor. And unfortunately, she's not going for her third term, which we will talk about right now. Let's jump into, um, this year as in, in twenty twenty-two, we voted on allowing for ranked choice voting. And what that is, is let's get, let's get going here, we'll go view one fifty. Okay, uh, let's go a little bit bigger even. All right, here we go. So, um, we've got ranked choice voting, uh, and eleven million people across America are now doing, are, are voting by ranked choice. November twenty, uh, November, excuse me, fifth is our first ranked choice vote. One thing that's super cool that's happening, um, we've got some clients that have moved here from, uh, the Texas area and they said, man, the blue book that we get on election time periods is amazing. And I was like, oh, I just kind of took it for granted. And it's, and it's, it's a pretty large expense, but essentially it's kind of like a, why you would vote for it? Why you would again, uh, vote against it, groups and, and kind of pros and cons, help you understand the voting. Because I will get to it here shortly that we're gonna have some charter amendments that like, the, the verbiage that they use is, is not super easy. So they're gonna have a local blue book online. But, um, I was at the Fort Col, I was at the farmer's market this last weekend or maybe even the weekend before. And, uh, City of Fort Collins was out and they were educating people that, hey, this, this year, we've got ranked choice voting. And specifically, it's gonna be on, uh, mayor race, council member race, uh, but that's about it. And, and how it works is essentially until a candidate gets to fifty percent or more, uh, they kind of, they remove the lowest candidate, reallocate their votes and then until they get to fifty percent. So, uh, this year, it'll be interesting to see how this plays out and if it, and that impacts any of our candidates. It was a twenty twenty-two ballot measure, fifty-eight percent of City of Fort Collins, uh, um, supported it, begins this November. And, uh, we'll see how it all goes. Here's what it will look like. So you have, uh, your, you know, your first choice, second choice and third choice, and it will go up to ten choices. There may be more candidates, not, it looks like there's gonna be six mayor candidates, just so you guys know. But it could go more than, um, ten candidates, but there's only gonna be ten rankings for that. So, um, but it looks like we'll have six candidates to choose for, from, and we'll have to rank them one through six. And it is, there was an interesting cons, uh, conversation of like, one person's like, ain't, was not angry, but just didn't feel like it was very democratic if you wanted to put first choice, second choice and third choice. Because his, if his choice was the lowest receiving votes and they got reallocated, but he only had them as the first, second and third choice, his vote essentially does not count. And that was a conversation that he wasn't thrilled about. But, um, I mean, I guess for me, shoot, you know, I, I don't know. Um, it's nice on the mayor side, there are six people. And I'm probably, from my perspective, on a few, I'm probably okay with one or the, this person. And if I had to, this person type of deal. So maybe, um, in that where it's not so, um, volatile or, you know, high, high intensity, uh, and you noted candidates, I, I don't know. It's, that, that might be hard if there's only, you know, three candidates and you're like, man. Uh, I guess that'd be interesting to see how that all turns out. Uh, the, here's on the twenty twenty-five ballot, here's what we got coming up. We've got our mayor race, one council districts, one, three and five. Those are four-year terms, um, and then a two-year term for the mayor. Uh, five to six charter amendments, we'll get to those in a little bit, we'll kind of just talk about that. A Tabor question, uh, taxpayer bill of rights. And then a, and then two to three citizen initiatives is, is expected. And possibly those could be the Hughes Stadium that is gonna come up for votes. So it could be a really interesting, uh, local election. Here are some, uh, key dates for us. So, um, October tenth ballots are gonna be mailed out. So be on the lookout if you're in Laramie County. Um, October twenty-seventh is the last day to request mail out. And then let's see here, I think, oh, man, I would have thought, October twenty-seventh. I bet you that's the last day too, to mail in your ballots, last day to request a mail ballot. I don't know, I would have to imagine that's the last day to mail in your ballot. But regardless, number, number four is the election day. Uh, we should have results live, seven, eight PM and twelve PM. But then what's interesting is they don't certify the election until November twenty-sixth. Elections are expensive, that is for sure. Um, let's see here, on the consent calendar, they were talking about Connections needing another twelve million dollars on top of, or they're already one hundred and fifty, uh, two hundred million, one hundred and seventy-five million, excuse me, that they are building out their multifamily dwelling units. They have a forty-four percent take rate and they were only targeting twenty-eight percent of this time. If you're in Fort Collins, Northern Colorado, and you aren't using Connections, one, I would highly recommend it. They've got great customer service, it's a local, uh, utility and it's affordable. And you're, you're supporting our kind of, uh, this was a, on the ballot, we voted it in and now they are, are coming through. And so, um, if you're not using Connections, just highly recommend it, can't be more supportive. Um, we've had the director of Connections on the podcast, um, just really great, uh, utility here in Fort Collins. Uh, one of the things that they talked about at City of Fort Collins regular meeting, because there was a regular meeting, a work session after that meeting and then a special work session. So it was pretty, it was, it was five hours of council meetings again to watch, but great information, a lot of it. So we have a one water, um, basically plan, uh, that is essentially trying to get all of, uh, water supply, wastewater, stormwater and try to build this entire kind of all encompassing plan. And here's why, um, our water quantity, water quality, ecosystem, aging and inadequate infrastructure, a changing climate and then pricing and affordability. All of those things are trying to come in to balance both our future need, our current need and affordability. So those are all kind of a part of this plan. Um, here's our annual average water demand, um, forty-two percent of our water demand in the City of Fort Collins is from single family. Makes sense, nineteen percent are from, uh, multifamily. So sixty-one percent are from, you know, residential, sixty-three percent are from residential, um, users. And then from the rest, we've got, you know, hospitality, commercial, industrial, city accounts, irrigation, um, HOAs. So, but the majority of our City of Fort Collins users are residential. Here are some of our basins. So, you know, flood areas, uh, heavy water, you know, our basins. I just thought it was kind of really interesting, an interesting map more than anything. You know, you got your fossil creek basin, spring creek basin, foothills basin, Box Elder basin, Pooter River, Dry Creek, Upper Copper. So you'll see like a lot of, I just thought this was really interesting because like, you have like different names of, of subdivisions and creeks. And here's just kind of all of them on a map. So I just thought that was really kind of cool to see more than anything. Um, let's see here, we had a, we had some charter amendments, uh, we talked about council vacancy. That was kind of a nothing burger to me and Jenny Arnn's like, why are we even talking about this? And I kind of was like, I can't, couldn't agree more. But there's a potential for, uh, council vacancy and there's some mismatch of, uh, charter language along with, um, kind of what can happen. So they're just trying to clean that up, but it just seems like a lot of work for a very small chance of an issue. But I guess there's, it's not no chance. Here are the, uh, they, they were trying to, um, and, and none of the council members cared at all about what order these amendments go on to the ballot, but they are coming up here on the ballot. And, uh, so these amendments, one of the things that, uh, Mayor Arnn talked about on one of our podcasts was one of her goals was to clean up the charter. And it's just hasn't been cleaned up in, in decades and she's doing that. There were some amendments last year that cleaned up the charter, there's gonna be more amendments this year. So, you know, good job, uh, Jenny Arnn, you know, kind of sticking to your guns and clean those are, those up. All right, okay, now I want to show you guys this, oh yeah, we can go right here. Okay, there was a city council work session, a special one on Thursday. And the two main things that they talked about was our budget, kind of a budget update, mid-year getting to be, or you know, getting to be mid-year budget update of what's going on. But then also the Oak Street, Remington Affordable Housing Project that, that got its paw, that got paused. So there's about a hundred and fifty parking spots on this lot right here. Um, and then here you got Aggie Theater, you've got Stuffed, you've got Urban Egg, uh, you, you know, it's a great location. Then you also have one forty Oak, this is an affordable housing project right here, I can't, um, highlight. But you got one forty Oak, an affordable housing project here. And between the City of Fort Collins, the DDA and the Housing Catalyst, they had a memorandum of understanding that I, that is no longer going to be in play because there was pushback from the, uh, the, from city cow, um, city citizens, businesses saying there's, we can't get rid of this much parking. And in the memorandum of understanding, there was a one-to-one replacement. This just doesn't make sense, um, for the Housing Catalyst financially to make it work. So there has to be a change where they don't have to replace each parking spot that they take up. And one thing that I found was interesting is in downtown Fort Collins, which is forty-eight blocks, which is a much bigger area than you would think of for downtown Fort Collins. But there's over ninety-seven hundred parking spaces down here. And this, you'd lose about eighty spots of the hundred and fifty. So, you know, a person came up and was like, we're gonna lose less than one percent of our downtown parking and we're, you know, not gonna build an affordable housing project because of it. I don't know. So anyways, uh, I just thought it was kind of interesting, let's go down here. Uh, one thing that's interesting is they bought that, that parking lot for a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, they've already paid off all of the bonds and everything like that. It's operated as a surface parking lot for nearly five decades. There are three parking garages in, uh, Fort Collins and I think like nine parking surface lots. Okay, here we go, affordable housing required, here's one of the memorandum, required one around preservation of all existing spots, which that was kind of the deal breaker. Um, here, did it, no, I don't want that, I don't want, here's some of the concerns that came up is, can the city legally sell? And they said, yes, we've, we can sell a lot. So that was, that was, um, determined to be okay. But here was kind of the, um, also an interesting part was, um, parking analysis, request to consider findings, no, that's not what I want, I want it here. This was really interesting. A revised appraisal suggested a significantly higher value from the parking lot than what they expected. And this kind of felt a little greedy from the City of Fort Collins. And there was a few council members that were pushing back pretty heavily on this, saying like, why does it matter what the value is? That's kind of why it's, even though it's not a land bank, because there is a land bank program in the City of Fort Collins. And that's kind of their intention is to buy land for future development at today's cost and just bank that land for future development. And they're, they were like, this, it doesn't, why, why should it matter that the value is so much higher than what we believed it was? Because ultimately it's kind of an inherent land bank to where we can leverage this asset and build affordable housing at a fraction of the cost that a for-profit or nonprofit or whatever builder could because of the value of the land that they would have to buy. And I can only imagine what that value of the land was because like I said, uh, in many, in other episodes, uh, Bohemian Foundation bought the old Lyric Building, which this, I think it'd be great. Let's see here. I use Laramie, if you guys aren't using Laramie County Assessor or looking at it, it is just a great, great website and an awesome tool. Um, but it also has a great map feature, feature. Let's dial into Old Town Fort Collins and where the lyric was right here, boom. So that's three hundred East Mountain Avenue. So let's go see what that bad boy sold for, I think it was two point three million. Two point three million dollars is what it sold for and it's only point zero nine acres, okay? So, you know, that is right here, all right? That's now for downtown, this is the square, this is the heart of Fort Collins. This is where, this is where the most valuable property in all of Fort Collins is. So you, as you can, as you go out slightly, you know, the values are gonna decrease just a touch, but this is still an extremely valuable area. And here is the, uh, the Oak Street parking lot. Now it's, it's interesting because it has actually subdivided already. So like, one of the things that the Housing Catalyst was talking about was like, hey, we could just buy parcels of it. We don't have to buy all of it. But, you know, we're talking, this is one block from downtown and this is just one block as well. So in about, I don't know, five times, six times the size. And if this was worth two point three million dollars, I mean, what is the value of that land? And I just, I thought it was kind of interesting because, you know, City of Fort Collins is basically saying, okay, like, there's a lot of value to this land, like, how can we maximize it? Because this appraisal came in and told us, wow, the value of this land is a whole lot more than what we thought it was. But there were city council members like, who cares? What does it matter? Like, we, we want, this is a priority of ours, affordable housing, and they kind of went down that road. But anyways, um, Housing Catalyst kind of got left holding the bag and they were asking for a seventy thousand dollar non-interest bearing, uh, loan from the city to make up for some of their costs that they incurred. Um, here's, and she wants to stash a pause when the part of the project shifted, changed. Because there were some information, they were hoping for some kind of ARPA funding and different things, uh, because this MOU got signed in twenty twenty-two. But it is on indefinite pause right now. And they're kind of punted it out a year till next September when, um, the Housing Catalyst can submit for more, you know, applications for grant funding. City of Fort Collins, City Council, they kind of want to say, hey, can we somehow like, keep this alive? Keep parking a part of it, keep affordable housing a part of it, but don't let this project die. So we'll see what happens in the next year, okay? Uh, the next one was, uh, City, um, a Council Finance Committee Budget Update. And I will say, I've talked with a buddy of mine who's at CSU, you know, he's mentioned that like, hey, listen, uh, some of our sales tax revenues, like City of Fort Collins, Laramie County, uh, Pooter School District, Colorado State University. You know, there's all some concerns there based off of federal funding and, and employment and things of that nature. So there was an update to how were you looking for our budget? And, uh, we'll kind of go from there. Um, here are some things that they're concerned about. Uh, University of Michigan's consumer study fell for the fourth straight month in April. Uh, there was no rate cuts from the Federal Reserve, our US GDP contracted. Um, and then, uh, let's see here, national policy is uncertain, I think everybody can attest to that. Uh, here is some unemployment numbers, you know, so that's a little bit concerning, unemployment's ticking up. Uh, City of Fort Collins is doing okay, Colorado is kind of at the national average. And then, uh, the, uh, are above the national average and City of Fort Collins is just below. So we're still below our target rate of five percent, but it is ticking up a little bit and that's a concern. Um, here are some trends that they're taking away, consumers are worried, um, spending less, especially when fifty percent of our city rev, sales tax revenue comes from city sales tax. Uh, trade policy, unemployment is expected to increase, high levels of debt in Colorado households. They need to spend less because of that. Here is how our, uh, revenue is broken down for city government, a four hundred and eight million dollar. I don't understand this totally because I think we have a six hundred and fifty million dollar govern, uh, government. And actually it even jumps all the way up to seven hundred and fifty million dollars. When you talk into like, how things come back and forth between utilities and, but money changes hands. But when you back that out, it's like 650. So I'm curious, it says, um, here's our city governmental revenue. So I don't know if that matters, but. 49.8% comes from sales and use tax. And so pretty significant. Property taxes, they said two-thirds of that property taxes go back to the PFA, Pooter Fire Authority, which I thought that was an interesting number. Um, here's what our actual was in 2024 and here's what we needed to budget to accommodate for our uh expense increase. So we had to have a 4.2% increase and we're not really seeing that. Um, we are a little bit over because we had a $2.4 million one-time revenue from an audit. Um, and you know, um. Uh, essentially go back through and audited that businesses and vendors and got an extra $2.4 million. Our use tax is high, our building permits, they said that we were at 60% of last year's total building permit budget. So there was a ton more that came in, in the first two quarters this year for building permits, but. Together, you know, we're actually $2.5 million over budget, but we're $300,000 under. If you remove that one-time revenue, which is not um consistent. So here's kind of what it says is, here's our budget. Um, we're 4% over on our actual, but um. You know, our actual sales tax was down 1%, our city use tax was up 37% and then. Without our one-time, we're actually just kind of like even. So uh, not what we need because we want to get a 4.2% increase. This number, or this graph's really interesting. So this just shows the growth of Northern Colorado more than anything. So. This is our uh, City of Fort Collins percent of Laramie County's population hovering just under 50%. Actually. You can even see that's kind of decreased a little bit to more 45% of the total overall population. So. The growth of Laramie County is growing and City of Fort Collins is, is growing, but not nearly as much as Laramie County is, or our percentage of the population's decreased. But everybody in Northern Colorado used to come and shop in Fort Collins, because hey, that was where you could shop. You know, 70% of county sales happened in Fort Collins, but. Over the last decade, Windsor's taken, you know, a lot of money from uh City of Fort Collins, Johnstown, Timneth, Loveland. So our city percent of county sales has decreased to uh, you know, just at 50, or right around 50%. So we're, uh, those that are living here in Fort Collins are shopping here, but we're not getting as many people living in Windsor coming to shop in Fort Collins or. Uh, living in Loveland or, you know, comparatively to historically. Here is also some other communities around the front range, how they're doing. Um, so here's their budgets. So Commerce, Boulder, Aurora, Thornton. We got a couple of our uh neighbors not doing super hot, you know, down 5% in Loveland, down 6% in Windsor. Um, you know, and Greeley's down 2%. So we're staying relatively strong, but we're not meeting our target of 4.2%. So uh, definitely, these are things that we need to watch because um, as we'll show here, like what is, what's happening? Um. I'm going to show here. Oh, this is. I kind of want to skip down to. Oh, here we go. Hmm. Okay, yeah. So what are we doing to kind of combat this? Um, our personnel costs, where there's a hiring pause right now at the City of Fort Collins, except for like. Um, you know, absolute necessity areas, uh, positions that need to be um. Bought, there's a lower than expected turnover of people, which here is, uh, historically, we see anywhere between, you know, 14. To 10 to 11, 12% turnover, but we're down to 1.6% and. That is actually our, so our expenses are a lot higher than what we were estimating because we were expecting more people to leave. The City of Fort Collins and go work elsewhere, but this is a, you know, correlation to the city or to the overall economy saying, hey, people aren't. Super confident in the overall economy, so let's just hunger down, stay put in the job that we are at. So again, they got a hiring pause, um, expense reduction proposals in different service areas. You know, specifically training supplies and then holding open vacancies. Um. And then there's going to be a 2026 budget revision process and, because here is our 2026. Yeah, 2025 forecast and uh our budget and forecast, right now we're projected to be 2% under. And then in 2026, with an increased budget, we're actually slated to be 3% under as well. So. A $3.8 million shortfall and a $5.7 million shortfall comparatively. So. You know, hey, man, if you're uh in, in Fort, if you're in Fort Collins and, and you know, needing to shop somewhere, shop local. Spend those dollars locally, try to uh avoid um the Amazon expenditures when you can and/or go out to eat and dinner here. So. Um, let's see here, that's, that's kind of, that was kind of the it, the ending of our city council and work sessions. There was a lot to it. But really some really good information. What do we've got going on this weekend? Well, one, it's Father's Day, so make sure to get your Father's Day a gift. And uh, two, there's a campfire sale on June 10th at the um food truck rally. Does anyone know when the food truck rally is, they're coming back to uh the Fossil Creek Park on Thursdays? It's like already June and I haven't seen them yet and. Definitely something that my family and I looked forward to, even though there's only like four to six food trucks there, it was just always a fun thing to do on Thursday nights, but. Tomorrow night, uh, from 5:30 to 8:30, there is, you can get a 25% off a summer adventure camp. Um, and that adventure camp is held up in Red Feather Lakes. So I thought that was pretty cool. Uh, from there, there's a 2025 Guardian Games and Expo. It's competition, prices $25, uh, $75 per person. Teams of two uh at the Loveland Sports Park in Boyd Lake. So if you're looking at doing something fun this weekend, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, June 14th. And then there's our third annual barbecue boogie, the, the, uh, let's see here, it's a kickoff to summer annual event by Pinnacle Youth Summit. Kind of talks about things to do outdoors, games. Um, it's from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM and it is uh, you know, it's free. So go have fun doing that. Otherwise, some things that you can do on like a weekly basis, Fort Collins Farmer's Markets every Wednesday and Sunday at. Basically the Ace Hardware Parking Lot on Harmony and Lemay. And then there's the Laramie County Farmer Market down off of Oak Street in the Laramie County Courthouse Parking Lot from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM every Saturday. It is popping. Fort Collins Foxes have baseball games this week on the 10th, 11th, 12th and 14th. Uh, City Park, uh, it's $10, so go check that out. Um, kind of just a fun thing to do, super cheap, super affordable. And then there's a Makers Market this Saturday, uh, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Bath Garden Center. And then uh, for Father's Day, a couple of things, there's a Dad Bod Show. At uh Breckenridge Brewery, 12 to 4:00 PM on Sunday, June 15th. And then if that's not up your alley, uh, there's a car show in Greeley from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Sunset Memorial Gardens. So some fun things to do. Happy Father's Day to all you fathers out there. Um. You know, hope you guys have a great day and, and weekend coming up. And then one thing that I've definitely been noticing conceptual uh designs under review. A lot more ADUs are making their way through the conceptual reviews. So um, I'm seeing like. Two to three a week right now coming through, which is just pretty wild to see. So. Um, it'll be interesting to watch how that kind of process plays out moving into the future. Now that's all I've got for live in Fort Collins this week. Appreciate you guys joining me. If you guys have any questions or comments or anything like that, you know, feel free to comment below. And uh, until next week, everybody, have a great day. See ya.